Flank allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the right public for his statement, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll move into the informational section. Our town manager is not here tonight. Tammy, do you have anything to say to address this or no?
I would be happy to answer any questions, or if I cannot, I'd be happy to provide the answers.
Okay, I think we can see that the upcoming meetings from August 5th, August 12th, 19th, two of the 19th is in August the 25th. These meetings will be held here. We move to comments, and we have public comments. We have three people signed up at this time. Renee Bevins.
Good evening. My name is Renee Bevan and I live at 101 Beale Avenue in Smithfield. I'm here tonight to thank this town council for the hard work that you're putting in. The fall election of 2024 brought new hope to the citizens of Smithfield and your hard work has not gone unnoticed. The Mallory Scott Project resulted in citizens starting to pay attention to the un-Smithfield-like growth that's incongruent with our current neighborhoods and our zoning laws. Thankfully, this new council has shown its listening to the people who elected them. This council has also made the best of a bad situation as it relates to the cottages. You inherited a property that had been rezoned for 150 units comprised of 15 10plex buildings. When the COVID restrictions on common hallway dwellings made this building model cost prohibitive, the developer reduced the project to 135 single-family units zoned for condominium-style ownership. Our current planning commission recommended six to one for approval for the 135 condominium units and five special-use permits for this development known as the cottages at Battery. Never mind all the negative aspects associated with condominium ownership, never mind that the developer changed his story over and over again about the monthly fee, what the fee would cover, who was responsible for the maintenance of the units, and never mind that he can't or won't identify the builder. They recommended approval for 135 units with five special-use permits, including one for density and one for setbacks. When the project came to you, town council, you were direct and firm with the builder. We ended up with 104 units and two special-use permits, and neither of the special-use permits is related to density or setbacks. One of the projects that was on the agenda for tonight has been recommended for approval by the planning commission. The developer has requested a delay. My hope is developers are learning to respect our zoning laws and that if they want a project to get approved, they will need to follow them. Please know that the citizens who elected you are watching and listening. There was a groundswell of support for your campaign platform of managed growth and transparency. I hope you're going to be able to maintain the vigor that with the projects that continue to come before you. Your hard work is not going unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bevins. At this time, we have signed up Bob Hines.
Bob Hines, 216 Washington. I was speaking with my next-door neighbor who was born in 1937. I live on Washington Street. She advised when she was little that the end of Washington Street was a dirt road. She thinks that more of Washington was also dirt at the time. Now, let's go back about 150 years. I'd say probably safe to say all of Smithfield was dirt roads. In fact, I've seen a picture of Main Street that I would guesstimate it was probably in the 20s or 30s. It looked like it was dirt. Can't say for sure, but it looked like it. Most likely, no real building codes either. Density, well, it just seemed to happen. Want to read an excerpt from the Smithfield Times referring to a recent planning commission meeting. Darren Cutler in June criticized fellow commissioners for not being on board with the town council's new direction and asserted the body was too willing to give his blessing to developer requested special-use permits to waive density limits and other zoning requirements. He cast a lone sitting vote on two housing development proposals that reached planning commission earlier this year. Other commissioners say some provisions of the zoning ordinance, such as a five-unit-per-acre limit in downtown neighborhood residential zoning, it overlaps with much of the historic district, is too strict, given that existing historic district neighborhoods already exceed the limit. We just had a recent election, Cutler said in June, the town spoke. There were changes on the council, quite a few, and we're trying to adhere to those changes. And now, if we have a planning commission and town council that are on two different paths and the town council's working to adhere to their campaign promises to the voters and manage the growth at a slower pace, we're not working together yet to do that on a planning commission. We're going to be at loggerheads, and we're really not going to function well together. Ms. Hilligas' response was, if you don't want any SUPs, then you need to just come out and say that. Some people say, oh, wait a minute here, let me get myself straight. Ooh, hold on here. It's been said that times change and people should change with the times. The past times show that some of Smithfield exceed the current density zoning statutes. Historic district, for one. Somewhere along the way, those restrictions were put in place as those that put those restrictions changed with the times by seeing future problems. When much of the density of Smithfield's historic district was built, my house about 115 years old, I dare say it was pretty much horse and buggy days. In fact, my neighbor said that when she was little during WWII time, many folks came into town on the weekends on horse and buggy. So much has changed. Roads are paved. The James River Bridge toll's been gone for 40-plus years. We don't come into town with a horse and buggy anymore. We travel on paved roads at high speeds with stoplights. Some people say they're not turning our area into Virginia Beach. Route 17 going to Harborview is atrocious. I'm sure you all experienced that. So do we want to change with the times back to where, for example, the historic district was just built as you wish? Just because some areas built in the past are denser than the current code, does that mean we have to go back to those days? Being too lenient with some special-use permits as regards to density would seem to be doing so. So the point is, some places are dense. That was a long time ago. People put in these codes to slow it down, and there's those that want to change that. I'd send a different subject. I'd send a request concerning status of the proposed farmers' market, and the only response I got was Mr. Stallins. Maybe none of you knew any more than what was given. You all saw the same response I did. While I appreciate the candor, some things concern me. I'll recite a few lines from the response.
One minute.
No town of Smithfield general fund tax dollars contribute to its success. The protection is, the projection is that the market building itself be paid for through advanced town and county support. The 1.4 million each from the town and county, I guess that's just a manna from heaven, as opposed to taxpayer funds. I'm not necessarily saying that some sort of market's a bad idea. Many facilities and services exist for the citizens benefit at large funded with taxpayer funds, bike paths, Windsor Castle, tennis courts, police, other parks, and so on. Really appears that taxpayer funds will have to be involved. If so, let's just admit as such and work from there. Finally, actual ownership of the market space has not yet been determined. Given the length of time this project has been addressed, it would seem as though this issue would have been settled by now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. This time, I'd also like to let Robert Small, he's going to speak.
He's actually.
No, he's on the agenda, but.
He's on the agenda. You're on the agenda at the end, Mr. Small, on the old business.
But I wanted to move him up so he wouldn't have to sit here, because I know he's charging his client the entire time.
That's fine.
So I just wanted to move him up and let him address this.
I appreciate the reminder about charging my client. I might forget. I have been here before to update city council, town council, and not had great news, but tonight I think I have fantastic news. We were finally able to pry from the insurance company sufficient funds so that my clients can fund the entire cleanup of the property and, you know, get it in a position ready to rebuild. I sent a letter to Mr. Riddick on July 28th, which I think you all have received a copy of, and if not, I have extra copies here, but that has a contract which my clients have entered into with a company that has done this type of work before. It also, and it detailed the work that they were going to do. I attached to it the bona fides from the state corporation commission for the company, and I also attached a $5,000 down payment check, which was not requested by the contractor, but as a sign of good faith, we wanted to make sure that we made a payment toward this project on their behalf. The price that they have quoted, my clients have more than sufficient funds to pay, and in discussion with Mr. Riddick, I think he's spoken with the town manager, and I know some quotes were requested by the town, and they came in probably higher than what we have, and it may relate to things with the RPA. Suffice it to say, whatever the cost ends up being, the insurance company has released enough funds for us to meet those costs. Then I sent a follow-up letter on July 31st, which I think you each got a copy of tonight, if not before, to confirm that they've retained Davis and Associates, which is a professional firm, to do the various land surveys and other things under the RPA. And this is the type of work that Davis Associates has done. I think Mr. Riddick has experience with them, and I have a lot of experience with them over the years. They're very good at what they do. They asked for a fee of $2,800. We've paid that, and obviously, if there are additional expenses, we'll pay that, too. As we currently stand here tonight, there's an injunction order from the circuit court, which expires on August 27th. According to Davis and Associates, it looks like it will take until approximately September 4th for them to do all of the work they need to do for the surveys before any land disturbance can occur and things of that nature. What I would ask the town council to do this evening is to vote on a motion to approve this plan as it has been submitted to the town using these contractors. And of course, if there's additional contractors that need to be retained to get everything done right, my clients will do that, too. But in light of the injunction expiring August 27th and the fact that you all at least got quotes for the work and you had previously issued a blight ordinance and things of that nature, to clear matters up at this point, I would ask your indulgence tonight to take a motion to approve this plan on behalf of the Harrises so that we can move forward with these contractors and they know that they're going to get the work and get the job done. And I can assure you that the Harrises are extremely pleased that they are now able to fund all the work necessary to clean it up. They will leave the security fence in place until everything is cleared, and I understand that, for example, the swimming pool has to stay full of water so it doesn't rise up out of the ground, but they will continue to treat that for mosquitoes as necessary during the cleanup process. So I, with your consent, I would ask you to take up a motion to back away from the last motion, which was that you all were going to take over this project. We're pleased that they can fund it through their insurance and the town doesn't have to. We don't have all of our issues with the insurance company resolved yet, but I can tell you that getting the injunction, having your passed vote, all gave me the ability to argue to them that they needed to get off the dime and at least give my clients enough money to get all of this part done. So I thank you for all your consideration in the past and would ask you to entertain that motion, and I'll answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Bill, we need to move this to the old business again if we want to vote on this, correct?
No, you can.
Can we do it now?
You do now, yeah.
Okay.
If the council indulges the mayor's amendment of the agenda, which y'all can agree to, and you can go ahead and take this up since he's already given his presentation, and Tammy and I can speak to that if you want to hear.
Yeah, Mr. Bowman, I know you had some questions about.
No, I really don't have questions now. I think he's pretty much explained it, but I will make a motion to amend the agenda to move this from new business into the current slot that we have right now.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Call for the question.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Mr. Mayor, the only question I would have would be to our legal counsel to just ensure that all of our protections remain in place by virtue of the fact of how the motion should be, if we should make the motion, or if we do make the motion, what we need to do because of the lapse, knowing that the injunction is there, if there are any certain legal additions that need to be made in the motion to protect our.
The injunction prohibits the town from taking any action to remove anything.
Right.
Doesn't, it doesn't prohibit them from doing anything, although, given the timeframe that's going to be necessary for the administrative approvals, that time is going to come and go, and I don't think that's going to be a problem. So the injunction is going to dissolve and really is not going to be an issue. Ms. Clary and I talked about this today. The information that he has submitted on behalf of his client, had it been submitted months and months ago, would have been more than sufficient to meet the standards that we would have required, because it's a contract to remove the property, the debris from the property, and we're going to require that he do all the administrative things. And we've explained to Mr. Small that because there is an environmental component, the RPA involved, the Mr. Davis, his firm that he's engaged with, is going to have to do a mitigation plan and submit all that to Ms. Clary for approval. In other words, they can't go to work in the RPA until we have an approved plan for that. So all, and then the other component is, they want to attempt to keep their foundation in place, and I assume the swimming pool. That's going to require an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which may or may not happen. So depending on the action by the Board of Zoning Appeals, they may or may not be able to keep their foundation if they, and there's women pool, and if the decision by the Board of Zoning Appeals is unfavorable, they're going to have to remove it. But all that is part of the administrative process that we're well prepared to handle. What they've submitted is appropriate. They've sent, they've got a contractor with a written contract, which very often is more than what we get a lot of times. And so our recommendation would be that you accept this as the plan. You know, we've talked about this a lot. The town doesn't want to do this. It's not in our best interest to engage contractors and have to supervise all that. It's their responsibility. It's their expense, and so we should make them do it.
Further question, Mr. Mayor. Should we, Mr. Riddick, at this juncture, taking into consideration in good faith what Mr. Small has told us, should we establish a date certain that things, I understand BZA, I understand all of that, but at the same time, should we establish a date certain that this structure, other than, let's just say, the foundation, whatever, but the main gutted, destroyed structure, be removed by date certain?
I think you should, I think all you can do is set a date for review to determine what the status of the matter is. That was, that's typically, then it would come back before the town council, and you can take whatever action you deem appropriate.
I think, I think after we've got things moving along, Mr. Small has done exactly what he has said that he would do.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with that. The only issue that I've got is, I know how things that get hung up in this type of scenario can linger on even further than that. My concern is the neighbors.
Right.
My concern is the safety, again, as it's always been throughout this whole endeavor. I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't, we're not here January the 1st discussing it to the detriment of the neighbors and folks like that. That's my concern.
Our expectation would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Small, but once the approval process is completed, you go ahead and take care of the demolition of the debris.
Correct.
And with an understanding that the foundation is probably not going to be removed until such time as the Board of Zoning Appeal has acted.
Correct.
But if you make application shortly, that can be done pretty quickly.
Right.
Because that could be on the agenda for maybe September? Yeah, you could probably do it by September. You could probably have your matter heard by September.
We may need to have some of the information from the Davis and Associates in order to address that.
Certainly.
But what I would say is that I will represent to you, sir, that I will make, I will come to every city council meeting between now and when this is done and update the city council on the status of everything that we're doing. In other words, I feel like you all have been very gracious, as much as you can be, and I think you're entitled to get that directly from the horse's mouth and let you know exactly what's going on so that if at some point, once all the approvals are done, I don't want to speak for the contractor because I don't know yet exactly what the contractor needs to do to do the work, but I would hope that once all the administrative approvals are done, that it would be done within like 30 to 45 days, if not sooner. And my clients, by the way, have kept the contractor abreast of the information from Ms. Clary about what needs to be done and approved, so they understand that the project is in an RPA situation.
If there's no further questions, I mean.
As long as we can address it every month, I think.
Then we'll put it at the end of the agenda.
Yes, absolutely.
But I think he just made a very interesting point. Perhaps the expectation is that the demolition should be completed no less than 45 days from the completion of the administrative approval. Because he really doesn't have a.
Yeah, I don't have any control over the contractor's schedule.
I get that. I did. That's not me.
But I will, I will come to your meetings and make presentation. The only one that I might have to miss is your meeting in October. My mother goes to her lake house in Maine every year for a couple of weeks, and this year it's in October. And I'm one of the drivers of the car.
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the plan as.
Mr. Bowman, may I interrupt us for a moment?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I have a question for the attorney. If we accept, isn't there a 90-day window attached to this?
Well, there's a, there is, no. We've got the statute, Tammy.
I do, they shall have 90 days to complete all work approved in the plan. However, the administrator may grant extensions of time to complete the work where the owner has completed a substantial portion of the work in compliance with the plan.
And are we the administrator in this case?
She is.
It would, it would be me.
Right. Thank you.
But he's represented that, his expectation is 45 days, yeah.
After the approvals.
After the approvals.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the plan as presented, that we shall have further reviews, and if anything comes up that is not included in the plan, or there is anything that causes undue delay, that Mr. Small will advise the, this council and the zoning administrator, director of what's going on, and we're taking it to your word for it. So, yeah, that's my motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, call for the question, please.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Small.
Thank you all very much. And again, we appreciate your patience and understanding. Thank you. Have a good day.
Now, we move to council comments. We wouldn't have any comments.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Public comments. Does anyone else want to speak about anything that hasn't signed up at this time? If not, then we'll move to council comments. Any council member have any? Mr. Cutler?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a few things I'd like to speak about tonight. Let's get my notes together here. So pretty new on the town council, as everyone knows, recently elected, and have some observations over the last several months and some actions, I think, to help fix those things or, you know, help improve a few elements. And so I just want to discuss them in an open forum so we have transparency. And the first will be, you know, just discussing the results of the recent election. And we did turn over three seats and maintained a fourth seat in the election, but we still, we're still seeing a push for very dense growth and observing a lack of awareness of citizen concerns and direction that the town council is trying to go, and specifically citizen concerns. And I bring this up because, you know, I think it's very important that even if, even if words are spoken or written or in a survey, even if they're not spoken at the podium here, that we hear those words. So, but I then thought about ways to, ways to attack it, you know, and it's pretty tough. The developers know what they're doing. And so at the, later on in new business, I have a, I have a task process. I probably have to work with you on, Ms. Clerk, but this will be potentially a task, and whether I make the task myself or we make it through a motion in new business. But to develop a planning, a planning department recommendation guideline, I would like to work with the town manager to develop a recommendation guideline for the planning department to create a very high barrier to any applications that don't respect our zoning laws. So we're currently dealing with things, if you look at the cottages, on how we dealt with that, from a project of 150, then down to 130, 35 or whatever, down to 104 through the town council, which is basically a backwards process, right? We should be receiving a development that fits within our zoning laws, then comes to the planning commission and is fixed to meet the zoning laws appropriately in a way that fits in with the town of Smithfield, and ultimately come to the town council for a vote for that. But what we saw with the cottages was kind of a backwards of that. So the first step I have for this, and this will be a task that I would like to be clearly identified in the minutes and then carried on into old business until resolved, would be for the town manager to work with myself to develop a planning recommendation guideline for the planning department. So that's the first commentary item that I have. If there's any questions or discussion, I'm happy to discuss now or at any other time.
Darren, I'd like to suggest somebody from planning also be on that meeting with y'all.
Yes, well, so the town manager, we don't task, we have four direct reports. We don't, so we task the town manager, and he would assign whoever, which would probably be the town planner, probably the whole planning department perhaps. But the task would go to the town manager to execute because he's the direct report to the town council, and he would assign the town planner, whoever he deemed necessary.
Oh, that's fine, as long as there's somebody from planning on that committee as well.
Yes, ma'am. The second thing I'd like to discuss is school proffers. And I've talked about this a lot over the last several months, and I want to start with thanking our town attorney, Bill Riddick, for today providing some very clear legal guidance and some very clear status. That's a little contrary with what I hear from the school board, but I think progress is being made. But the reason I want to bring it up is, you know, it hasn't really been that easy to get those answers, as easy it should be. And I perceive this element of our growth as part of what our citizens talk about when they discuss managed growth. They talk about infrastructure in schools, the utilities, of course, but infrastructure, schools, traffic, those things continually come up when we talk about managed growth. And what I saw from, from Mr. Riddick's report today was that there is a pathway to yes on this. The pathway to yes doesn't exist through the town council, but there is a pathway to yes on this. And so I would encourage our council to continue to work with the county and the citizens of the town and county to work with your county representatives as well on this. I feel like if there is assistance available for our schools and infrastructure, it would be poor governance to forego that money if there is a way to get to yes on it. Currently, we have a disappearing school proffer, which is better than nothing, but that could be almost $2 million that would go directly to our schools with no disappearing function, if done properly, I believe. All right, two more things. I'm trying to keep the five minutes under each of them. This was, this was a big one. So we started, if you noticed, last week in the committee's meeting, we began the evolution of an evaluation process. And this is for our four people that report directly to the town council, town manager, town attorney, town clerk, town treasurer. And I want to thank immensely the town staff. And I want to thank immensely the town staff for helping me with this, and promptly. I mean, this has been shocking and refreshing, not shocking, but refreshing. Ashley Rogers, the human resources director, Leslie King, the town clerk, and Laura Ross, the treasurer, all worked together with the town manager to answer probably a barrage of questions from me and requests for data. And Ms. Rogers especially went above and beyond and provided every single thing I asked for in a very timely manner. So thank you for that. From the history perspective, though, I just want to share that we're deficient, basically. There's no real fingers to point at this, you know, it's not the town council or the town staff's fault, but we're deficient on doing evaluations on some of our personnel. And when we look at our evaluation process, it says, first line, that all employees of the town of Smithfield will be evaluated. And that's what's currently in our evaluation process. But I don't want to dwell on that, I want to discuss the future of that. And Ms. Rogers is hard at work on a process that will be enfolded into our town HR process for all of our employees, I believe, that will ensure its continued usage. We recognize that the town council is not a fully paid employee, and it's hard to track year to year with turnover and elections, so building that into our HR program will ensure that the town council is held accountable to do that, so we can then hold our employees accountable as we assess things like performance and pay. This is especially important to our voter mandate. Our voter mandate wasn't only about growth, it was also about transparency. So I think it's just important to understand that this council, all seven of us are working very hard for you to bring transparency to that. And that would come with another task, Ms. Clerk, which is in progress, but I would like to track in old business, which is the task to develop the evaluation system, as well as a task to complete the 2025 evaluations of our four direct reports. And as far as the future goes, Ms. Rogers, I've done a lot of evaluations myself, and I'm happy to assist in any way possible, and I'm sure many of us are. One more item. I want to talk a little bit about our last closed session, and a few items about the last closed session, but then really about how we work this process. And so I'm going to feign some ignorance, because I'm new, but I left the last session and reflected on it for a few days, you know, thinking about it. So I had a few questions, and the first was of necessity. So, was it necessary to be in closed session? And I'm going to leave that task to the town attorney to resolve. We did discuss, it seemed like, a number of items. We motioned for two. And then, help us on, you know, of those items, were they necessary to be in closed session? If not, then what is the process for us to get them back into the public sphere? This is another thing that I had made a motion about earlier following the campaign that I think is really important for the mandate that we got from voters, which was to improve transparency on the town council. So, that's two tasks as well, please. One, to determine the validity of the closed session. But most importantly, and this will be for town manager, town attorney, and someone from town council, to work with the town attorney and the town manager to develop a closed session process, which it seems we're currently lacking. What I would like to see personally is a process where we make a motion to go to closed session to determine the necessity. For instance, go into closed session, town attorney says, here's why you need to be in closed session, and here's the topic. And then we vote on it. Then we have a full understanding of why we're in closed session before we discuss the meat of the topic. And I think that'll give us a better opportunity to identify opportunities for transparency, and have a greater discussion amongst the council members on, is this in fact appropriate to be discussed in closed session? And then finally, along with that, we discussed earlier in the year, taking minutes for closed session, of which we determined, as far as we're aware, at least myself, and I think Councilman Bill can second me on this, that attorneys at Richmond that we worked with in training said that it would be confidential in closed session, even with minutes. So I would like to make another task to create the closed session process, as well as for the attorney to validate that our process will keep our closed session information closed session and confidential. So I'll come back to two items of those on new business, but if it, closed session process, task process, evaluation process, and recommendation guidelines for planning, I think are needed for the town. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Collet. Any other council member have any comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. And Mr. Brooks, you have one that's out of order. You got C1 and C3. Can you address those, please?
Sure, C1. Town has recently been awarded a grant from Department of Criminal Justice in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. I would like to make a motion for a resolution appropriating that sum from that Department of Criminal Justice services to the twenty-five, twenty-sixth general fund operating budget.
C3?
Yep, and then C3. We have five invoices over twenty thousand that need our approval. First one from the Blair Brothers for seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Also Blair Brothers for eighty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Third for Xylem, fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Santander Bank, ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. And the last one is Tactical Electronics for twenty-five thousand, eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. So I make a motion, we approve those invoices.
All right. Can we discuss with the sidewalks ordinance?
Yeah, get back over to it.
They skipped that, Darren. They ought to come back to it.
That's under your, that was under your-
C9, I'm C3. Sorry.
Oh, he's asking about C3.
I was asking about C2, but I understand we're coming back to it.
He was asking about C2.
Second.
Hello. It's not him.
Wait a minute. He made the motion to approve C1 and C3. A, B, C, D, and E. C2 was pulled back. That's what I made a second.
It wasn't pulled back.
I know, what are you doing there?
It was out of order.
They never discussed C2.
I thought we were coming back to C2.
Well, it's a consent agenda, and you normally vote on all three.
Right.
I think, Mr. Brooks, he made a motion, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're recommending approval, are you not, Mr. Brooks?
Correct.
And so it really wasn't a motion, because it would be a motion to adopt the consent agenda. But we still have one item to discuss on the consent agenda, which is item C2, which I guess you took him out of order, Mr. Mayor, because he's the chairman for one, it was in his committees.
Yeah, I was going to have to bring him back, that's why.
Yeah, right, yeah. I think C2 is under Ms. Butler's-
Exactly. Now, Smollett, can you address C2, please?
C2 is an ordinance to amend town code as it relates to outdoor dining on public sidewalk. We actually discussed that in our last committee meeting, and the actual verbiage is, this is a proposed text amendment to Article 3, Dining on Public Sidewalks, Section 26-294, minimum width of sidewalk to reduce the minimum width from seven feet to four feet.
So it seemed like when we discussed this previously, it was more in the vein to get some of our establishments in order with the, that don't have, that, you know, are obviously over the seven feet already. But I'm more concerned about the other establishments that could extend on out, thinking around, you know, the establishments around the Smithfield Square, Times Square, and the stage that already have seating. And there's already plenty of walking space there, but if that was condensed on, unless I'm missing something, Main Street down to four feet, seems like it would be a little narrow.
Well, the four feet, you can, that's meets code for ADA.
It does.
Yeah.
Tammy can speak to this, but the, right now, there's already outdoor dining in front of the bakery, correct?
Yes, correct.
And so they would be, at seven feet, they're in violation, although it's been, they've been there for a long time. And there are other facilities through the town where they can't meet the seven-foot minimum. And because, she suggested four feet, because it complies with the minimum requirements, and it would permit the businesses to continue in compliance with our laws. So that's the reason for the change.
Yeah, I recall that with the Fiddling Pig specifically, how their property line and the sidewalk, and the edge of the sidewalk kind of aligned as being an example of inability to conform, which is reasonable. But then around the bakery, it seemed like there was plenty of space there, that they were already utilizing an effective amount of space, and there was still a great amount of space for walking. Seems like much more than four feet, maybe it is less than seven feet. I didn't measure it, but if it were only four feet right there, it would seem to be quite the bottleneck in that spot.
But it's not. But it's not. Four feet is a statewide minimum, which would, in the case of the Fiddling Pig, it allows them to comply. And in the case of the bakery, there's more than four feet there. So they're already meeting, they might have been meeting the minimum of seven, I doubt it, though, but-
Right, but my concern is if they extend their, if they stick two four tops side by side and extend them out to four feet, and then now we create a bottleneck on our most busiest walking boulevard area, as opposed to around the corner on Church Street, you know, it's less of a concern, because the foot traffic turning that corner where the sighted place that was specifically out of compliance is, you know, it's less of a concern there, because they also have structural barriers on their property that delineate sidewalk. I mean, it's really, it's not really any question about where the sidewalk is there. But if you had it in other places where there were questions about where the sidewalk is, I just think it would become a little more difficult to manage. And I would be curious, I mean, have we had a sighted problem with this, or has there been an issue reported by any organizations or businesses that it's a problem with, other than just being unable to comply?
It's not that they're unable to comply, I think Tammy can speak to this. I want to try to bring them into, you know-
That is correct, especially with the Fiddling Pig and the Cure over there with their tables as well. This would allow them to maintain their outdoor dining. The problem with the Fiddling Pig is, again, their property line abuts, so that would be encroaching three feet into their property line where they have that fence and those planters and those structures.
Mr. Collet, to address your concern, Section 26-288 requires a sketch to be submitted by the business and approved by the administrator, so she can limit the area that's subject to use for outdoor dining. It's all, you have to read everything, you know, together in the section on dining on public sidewalks, but she has the ability to limit that, so that that does not become the, I mean, you have a valid point, but there's safeguards built into the ordinance. But the four feet is problematic if, I mean, you can leave it like it is, and the Fiddling Pig, I mean, the Fiddling Pig is, they lose half their dining. So, I mean, that's kind of the impetus for this.
Hey, Tammy, just a point of clarity, have we measured from the curb to the tables at the bakery, or anything along that line?
We went out to the Fiddling Pig and the Cure, and the four feet would bring them into compliance.
How about down Main Street, which is Darren's concern?
They are exceeding the four feet. I don't remember exactly what the dimensions were.
Ms. Butler?
What do you want me to do?
It's on the consent agenda. We need to vote. Someone needs to make a motion.
Leslie will call for the vote. Doesn't Leslie call for the vote?
No.
Yes, she does.
Yes, she does.
Yes, she does, right.
She's presented it. There's no motion yet on the consent agenda.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we vote the consent agenda items, items C1, C2, and C3, to include C3, A, B, C, D, and E.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, call for the question?
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
At this time, we move to the action section. We have a public hearing, a special use permit. Tammy?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a special use permit in accordance with Article 3 FC 18. This would be to utilize a portion of the home as a home occupation for the use of a book author. The applicant has stated there will be no customers and no employees coming to the residence. Positive, it does allow the applicant to continue her profession of authorship. It is not a by right use and does require an SUP. This was favorably recommended at the June Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
We have two people signed up to speak about this. We have Nancy O'Barry, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward.
She is the applicant. Good evening, my name is Nancy O'Barry. I live at 107 St. Paul's Avenue in Smithfield, and I want to thank you for giving me this time to explain what I do, so you'll understand both the zoning ordinance and why I'm asking if I can continue. As an author, I create what's called intellectual content. So that means I'm sitting in front of my computer and I'm writing. I don't have anybody that's coming into my home to buy or to watch me write, because I, to be honest with you, I probably even put my cats to sleep when I'm doing this. I sit upstairs in a room over the garage, and if I'm listening to music while I'm writing, I've got my earphones on, so I don't bother my husband that's downstairs. I do not have books, per se, that are sold in my home. I do get books on occasion that I take to places like the Peanut Fest or the Smithfield Arts Festival, where I sell in public, not in my home. To do my work requires me to sit at the computer and write. I then send a finished manuscript to an editor and a beta reader. They send it back to me for recommendations to improve. I then take that, improve it, I send it to a person that formats it for me, and this is all done on the internet, and also a person that makes my covers, all done on the internet. So there's absolutely no one coming in to talk to me about how to do this or to make recommendations. I appreciate the idea that you are allowing me to explain this, because when I came here and got my license, and I got the extra fee, I was unsure how it was going to work. Luckily, this lovely young lady over here helped me understand about the noise ordinance being in a closed or confined group of people or homes, that how it might intrude on their ownership and their free time with their families. So what I'm asking you to do, if you don't mind, is to allow me to continue to write in the room over my garage, and not have people come into my house to buy a book, or not bore them to death or put them to sleep while I'm writing. I thank you again for your indulgence on this matter, and for her clearing up anything that I might have had. And I visit her so many times, I'm afraid that when she sees me, she wants to duck. But you guys have been so wonderful and so welcoming. I am honored to be calling Smithfield my home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Barry.
My pleasure.
We also have signed up Jenny Soul.
I don't need to speak to her.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass this, pass this, what are we doing here?
Special use-
Special use permit, thank you.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Hearing no others, no others, discussion, call for a question, please?
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beaver Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
At this time, we move to another public hearing, special use permit. Tammy?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking approval to rent 139 Sykes Court, which is an existing single-family residential dwelling as a short-term rental property. According to our zoning ordinance, short-term rentals as principal uses are only permissible by special use permit. No changes to the property are proposed in order to accommodate the short-term rental. The positives is it does provide additional accommodations, it is not a by right use and does require an SUP. Staff suggests approval should be conditioned on the applicant following the conditions outlined in 2Z, 1A through I, except for item B. These conditions do require a signed and notarized short-term rental affidavit ensuring compliance. This application was favorably recommended by the Planning Commission at the June meeting for the applicant to return in one year for a reinspection and reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you, do we have anyone signed up at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyone like to speak, come forward, please? Please state your name and your address.
Margaret Carroll, 136 Sykes Court. I am opposed to this, there's, actually, I'm not sure, but they've already had people there in the last two weekends, and I thought it had, we were supposed to vote on it first before we did this. Now maybe I'm wrong on that thing, because you said you already agreed last time? Can somebody explain that to me?
I think Tammy can explain that.
By right, you're allowed 104 nights in a calendar year as a short-term rental.
Okay, and it's already been agreed that they could do that?
That is permissible by right, correct. They don't need any special permits for that.
Oh, okay.
What they are applying for is for, to exceed the 104 nights in a calendar year.
Okay, thank you very much. The reason I oppose it, and I've talked to my neighbors, and none of them could come but me, but, and Ms. Paul here, the parking down there towards the entrance of the park, there is not a parking lot. All day long, we get cars that come down, turn around, go out. Every festival, we get jammed with cars down there, and this means that, that house can only really take, like maybe take three cars if they're short and tight, you know? But also, it's, it's a good-sized house, and I don't know how many people they are going to be allowed to have in there on one weekend as far as going in, and, and are they going to have, are they going to be vetted as far as being Airbnb or Verbo, or they, can they just pick anybody to go in, into the house? We do have children on that street, and like I say, it just gets very crowded, especially farmers markets, any of the festivals. I have a little Miata, I cannot get around that corner, and you're adding more people on the street, and we already, at the corner, already have an Airbnb, so, whatever it's Another problem I see is, I would like to have neighbors who are investing in the community. It's a nice little street, it's small, and I would just like to have people that are investing, not people just coming every weekend and different people. It's just concerning, like one weekend they came and, they all came out of a car, but I didn't even know what they were renting it, because they all came sleeping bags and they were having a hard time getting in the house. It was, it was like a little circus going over there, I wasn't quite sure what, what they were doing, but i, if they're allowed to do it, I guess. So those are pretty much my reasons I don't want it in that, that little spot. It's, it's really quite tight down there now as it is, so, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. O'Berry.
I have a question, Ms. Carroll.
Yes.
Prior to the sale of this house, I guess it was just recently sold and...
Yes.
How long had the previous occupants resided at that home?
We have had, believe it or not, I think it's been like three different occupants in about five years, they buy it, they fix it up, that house, it must be beautiful inside because they, every person moves in, remodels, so, but then, then they move. It is only a really, I guess, like mine, it's maybe a three-bedroom, because upstairs counts as a bedroom, and, you know, one bath, or maybe two baths, maybe they have added on a half-bath, but it's, I just want to make sure that we don't get a lot of people in there because it's just too, the parking's too tight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address.
Anna Boyer, 11183 Burns Bay Road. I'm the owner of 139 Sykes. I bought it about six or so months ago, I'm kind of using it not necessarily as a weekly turnover for Airbnb, I had a six-month renter in there initially. I'm a realtor here in town, and so sometimes I have clients who need a three-month stay in between their houses, and so this has been a wonderful addition to that. As far as issues with parking, you can easily fit three cars in, in that driveway, the town recently did some improvements to the sidewalk, and so you can go down there and see that you can easily get three cars. It is a three-bed, one-and-a-half baths, so at most, we usually have anywhere from six to eight people. They're coming for events, they're coming to, to, you know, go to the, to the markets, they're having weddings, they're enjoying Smithfield. I have one on Chalmers that I've had for four years with zero issues. Happy to come back once a year if there are any issues, and I'm happy to give my neighbor my information if they ever were to have any problems. Airbnb is very good about if you have an issue with somebody that's renting from you, handling that quickly. I've never had an issue where I've had to have anybody removed or anything like that, so if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to, happy to answer those.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, sir. Is your intent to keep this a, we'll call it a permanent Airbnb, and just using the length of time based on what you need? If you need somebody for three months, you can do that, but otherwise, you're just going to list it out and it's available any week, any given week?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I get another longer-term renter in there, then I just block those dates off so that they're not available.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming up and speaking about it. Anyone else have any other comments about this? If not, I'll close the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, we, last week, we tasked...
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah, you want council comments before?
Yes.
Yes, I believe that the way for us to go tonight is to table this particular issue. At our committee meetings, we test the town manager with investigating different uses, different numbers of Airbnbs, and particularly in historic district areas in a variety of towns, and until we get that report back, I think it would be voting in haste, so I would suggest that we table this particular.
Because we have a motion to table, do we have a second?
Second.
I got a question about it. Would our discussion in committee meetings apply to this situation being that it's already been approved by planning, or would it be any new requests before us?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Okay.
I think...
Vice Mayor Harris is asking to table this request, and my question is that this request has already come before planning and been approved?
They recommend it, they recommend it.
Recommended approval.
But you don't, you've had your public hearing, you do not have to take action tonight. You can, it's, yeah, right, the term is table, it's really defer consideration. Table is later into the meeting, but what you really want to do is defer consideration to a later meeting, correct?
Correct.
And I think the purpose is to create a policy or get some research results back to create a policy as it, as it relates to short-term rents.
You can't, you can't create a new policy based, you can consider information he brings you, if you want to create a policy going forward, that's fine, the applicant doesn't have the benefit, a benefit of your policy, so that's, that can't be applied retroactively. But you can consider the information provided by the town manager that you requested.
Yeah, I mean, what we discussed in that meeting was to create a policy, because we continue to see 1Z, 2Z applications come in.
I remember that, if we create a new policy now, how does it affect this request? It's my question.
That's, it's like an ex post facto law, you can't do that, you can't adopt new rules and expect somebody to comply with them, but you can consider information that's provided by the town manager based on your request. You, I think, Mr. Harris, you asked, or somebody asked the town manager to give you information about the other units in town and...
Yes.
And perhaps not, how it's dealt, dealt with in other localities.
Correct.
That's information upon which you can base your decision. You can't defer this until you've made a new policy and then expect...
The final decision we make on this particular thing is based on exactly what exists now.
Yes, sir.
I'm asking for a deferral because at our town meeting, or the town committee meetings, we asked town manager to do a little research.
Correct.
Having that research will, may inform our decision.
Right.
But it doesn't affect the zone.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, what research is the town manager doing? Because I thought we had a discussion around existing Airbnbs that we had, if we've had any problems, or how they were set up, some of them are set up to be reviewed annually, so what kind of information is the town manager bringing back to us?
If I remember correctly, what we asked him to do was to contact other town managers in areas that have seen an influx and increase in Airbnbs, particularly in historic districts, and to see what the impact has been on living conditions, neighborhood conditions, and those type of things. I think Frum Royal was one of the names that came up, Virginia Beach for sure, and he was going to reach out because we see him as Councilman Butler, Cutler just said, right now, we're peace-feeling, you know, we're trying to, you know, what if there's another one, then we're getting one, two, or three. We'd like to know what the impact has been or continues to be in other areas.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, I don't necess, know if I necessarily agree with it, being that this request is already in process. That's what my concern is.
If I can just also add, according to state code, we had until December of 2023 to regulate short-term rentals. If we were to go back now and try to change our short-term rental, we would not be allowed to have a special use permit for it. We would not be able to regulate it that way, so this, this wouldn't be something that we could add on to our regulations in regards to short-term rentals.
Right, and the, the gist of, of what we've asked town staff to look at is, you know, even historic towns as well as, you know, municipalities like Newport News, who I know is having an issue right now with it, but when I brought it up, it was so that these would not disrupt the residential character of a neighborhood. And I appreciate the lady coming and, and speaking a little bit earlier about what he, what she has seen. She lives there, and that, that's the kind of information that I wanted to get to everybody, and it has nothing to do with this particular unit whatsoever. It's are we going to change the character of this little historic town, or, or the neighborhood maybe across Red Point, for instance? And I think Mr. Bowman may, may even said last week that it was almost like a commercialization when you go to these long-term, short-term rentals, and that's the kind of information that, that we're looking for to make sure that we're making the right decisions in allowing or disallowing these types of units. So I, I agree with, with Mr. Harrison in wanting to table this particular one, because quite honestly, it does not have much support right now. Not to say that it, that it won in the future, but I, I think I, I would like to have some more information on what we can do to rein this in and make sure that it's done properly.
Just remember, and your points won't take it, but just remember, they're entitled 104 nights anyhow, so I mean, the, the activity, it might be less, but it's not going to go away because it's a by right permitted activity, and we can't change that. But you can, we still, you still have the ability, based on what Ms. Clary just said, to, to permit by special use permit with conditions, the long, the application for, they're, like she's applying right now, in other words, you, under our, the circumstances we have right now, you can put conditions on it, if, if you tried to amend it, that would all go away, you couldn't do it anymore. So we, with, the town's in a pretty good situation with the, the way our ordinance are situated, situated right now. But we can, that, we can explain all that and provide that information so you can have a better understanding before you take action.
I have a question for you, can you just clarify something? The applicant also asks, she has a variety of renters there, say she has someone that's there 90 days, do those 90 days, is that lumped in with the 104, or because it's a longer lease, it's not, how does that work?
Right, short-term rentals are defined, I believe, as less than 30 days.
Less than 30, so she could have somebody there for 90 days, that doesn't, that's not included in the 104, then she could have somebody...
Correct.
As long as it's longer than a month...
Right.
Then it's not included, so people, she still has access to these short-term rentals, but not, not to exceed the 104. That's right. I mean, she could do it every single weekend if she wanted to, boom, there's her 104.
Right.
But just nothing else? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Then that motion is to defer our action to your next meeting, correct?
Yes. Committee meeting? You want to committee?
Yes, I think you, well, you have to...
Yeah, we'll have to vote on it anyway. Well, here's my question.
You have to defer it to a time certain.
It's like you said, we can't go back on this application here, so, and make her do something else. We'll have to vote on that, but then moving forward, if we decide to do something different, then we have that opportunity, correct?
You can, you can discuss what, how you want to go forward in dealing with these things, but she's got an application before you, you have to take ac, action on it, you can't make up new rules for her to...
Right, that's, that's what I was trying to...
You can impose conditions because it's a special use permit.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
But if you're going to defer action, you have to do it to a date certain, and if you, you can defer it again if you want to, but that's, I mean, you have to, if that's your motion, it has to be to a date certain.
Would you like me to restate it?
Well, I'm not sure, yeah.
I said it in there, yes. I move that we defer action on this particular application until the next scheduled town council meeting, so that we may have time to review any evidence presented on this subject by our town staff.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. No further discussion, a call for a question?
Councilwoman Butler?
No.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Beaver Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes. Have another public hearing, I'd like to open for a special use permit for Eastwood Sales Trailers. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. This is for a 28 by 8 temporary white vinyl trailer that will be used to meet with potential customers while the model is under construction and is expected to be on site for not longer than four to six months. This application allows the applicant a temporary marketing office, it is not a by right use and does require an SUP. Planning Commission did favorably recommend this application in June. Thank you.
Does anyone like to speak on this motion? This item?
There are no sounds.
This time?
There are no sounds.
None, okay. Any other comments from council?
Did, did you, or, did you open the public hearing?
Yes, I did, yeah, I did, I did.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the request for the special use permit.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Further, any further discussion, hearing none?
I just, sorry, I have a quick question. Tammy, I'm sorry, if you just said this, I missed it, is there a time limit on this?
They said not longer than four to six months.
Okay, thank you. That's, okay.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, call for a question, please?
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beaver Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for a special use permit for Mallory Point Sales Trailer. Ms. Clary?
Staff report? Okay, sorry. The applicant is seeking a special use permit. This will be for two temporary real estate marketing offices. The two model homes will share a temporary parking lot. The garages will function as the offices and then will be converted back to garages when they are no longer needed. It will be open daily from 10 a.m. to 7 p.m. and by appointment. It does provide the applicants with a temporary marketing office for the sale of homes and is not a by right use and does require an SGP. It was also favorably recommended at the June Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
The public hearing is open. Does anyone wish to speak on this? Yes, please come forward and state your name.
Yes, my name is Steve Miller. I represent Stanley Martin Homes, our offices are at 118820 Fountain Way in Newport News. I'm just available to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
No other discussion. I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call for a question?
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beaver Meyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. This time I'll open a public hearing for a special use permit at Ben's Church Boulevard. A staff report, Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a special use permit in order to operate a recreational substance establishment, selling cigars, cigarettes, e-cigarettes. It would bring a business into an otherwise vacant location. However, it's not a by right use and does require an SGP. Due to previous illegal activity, this owner slash business was shut down. We do suggest that any approvals would be contingent on removing of the window signage, tenting, all of those regulations that we put into our, our zoning ordinance for recreational substance establishments. It was unfavorably recommended at the June Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Anyone want to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Anyway, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. A call for a question?
Councilman Cutler?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beaver Meyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. This time I open up a public hearing on a conditional rezoning and special use permits. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a conditional rezoning to highway retail commercial to facilitate the construction of a convenience store with fueling station islands and two additional retail users. These users, these uses are also in line with the future land use map as the current designation as corridor mixed use, which provides for primary commercial uses. The 6,139 square foot convenience store will feature a 4,170 square foot fueling station canopy with six double-sided self-serve fueling stations. In addition to traditional convenience store, there will be a made-to-order food menu, coffee bar, and smoothies. There will be indoor and outdoor seating. The store will operate 24 hours a day, seven days per week. The site has existing access servicing the Sherwin-Williams and will also include a right-in, right-out entrance shared amongst the subdivided parcels. There will be a pedestrian path allow along Route 10 for connectivity. The first special use permit is for drive-through facilities. This would be a drive-through facility at the convenience store for made-to-order food or other food items from the store. I did verify with Sheets that alcohol would not be sold through the drive-through. The second special use permit is for a waiver of parking and loading. This is to exceed the maximum number of parking spaces allowed by seven spaces, providing up to 44 spaces instead of the, the maximum of 37 spaces. The third special use permit is for the use of a service station. This is to utilize one parcel as a 5,500 square foot oil express facility. This application package was favorably recommended to town council at the July Planning Commission meeting, provided the applicants determine a way to review slash limit the third parcel, and they addressed VDOT's comments prior to the council meeting. We do suggest a deferral of action on this as we have not received confirmation from VDOT as of yet. Thank you.
Anyone, thank you, Ms. Clary. Does anyone like to come forward, speak on this matter? Please state your name, address.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Smith and members of town council. My name is Robin Niss. I work with Kinley Horn and Associates. We're a civil engineering firm that's prepared the plan that you see, I was going to say behind you, but I guess it's in front of you. Our business address is 4525 Main Street in Virginia Beach. Thank you, Tammy, for describing the anticipated conditional rezoning and the three special use permits that we've requested. Some of you may have spoken with my colleague, Randy Royal. He's leading our efforts on this. He'll be out of town this evening, and so I've elected to fill in, but I'm confident I can answer hopefully all of your questions. We have, I have several folks here with me. We have Jim Gallo from Interstate. They're the landowner. And then we have Tony Caruso with Sheets, and he'll be speaking shortly and giving some more information about the Sheets product and what that can look like. I also have with me Omar. Where's Omar?
Omar's sitting down.
I have Omar coming on. He is our traffic engineer. As Tammy mentioned, we're working very closely with VDOT to understand the traffic implications of this and make sure that the users of this facility, as well as anyone who is bypassing on their way to this meeting tonight, will have a, a clear way to travel through that area. So we're working with VDOT to understand their traffic requirements, and we anticipate having that done. So that, as Tammy mentioned, if we are able to defer this evening, simply answer your questions today, we should have final approval from VDOT in time for the September meeting. From an engineering standpoint, we believe we have a well-designed plan. It addresses access to the site as well as internal circulation through the site to make sure that there's no backup onto the roadway. We have accommodations for stormwater management and considerations for utility connections. We are planning to acquire off-site property in order to install roadway improvements. And we're also doing other roadway improvements that are going to be dictated by the TIA that we're working on with VDOT, and will be cost participating in the improvements that are generated by the master TIA plan for this area. We're proposing a Sheets, and you can see that's the facility to the right, and currently an oil and tire change facility. At this time, a third user has not been confirmed. And so as Tammy mentioned, as part of our coordination with the Planning Commission, we agreed and are putting in the form of a proffer that we'll bring back to Planning Commission any additional users to assure that they're not a repetitive use for this immediate area. Prior to taking any questions, Tony, do you want to speak a little about the Sheets and what that facility will be like?
Thank you. I'm Jim Salo. I'm actually the construction manager for the developer of the, the land. Yes, we, we, I'm overseeing this fabulous team here. It's Omar and his associate and this fine engineer beside me. But most of all, it's a joy to work with the tenant, Sheets. We, we, as a developer, we like to make friends, not just business affairs. So I'm going to let Tony come up here and give you a little bit of information on the made-to-order store and the convenience store and the gas station. But thank you for your time in hearing us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Please state your name.
Tony Caruso. I'm with Sheets. My address is 13302 Ellerton Terrace, Midlothian, Virginia. Would you be so kind as to flip to my slides? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So what is a Sheetz? So we don't have any Sheets in this area, but we are very excited to come here. So what we thought we would do is bring a presentation to you all, just to introduce ourselves, really looking forward to being a member of the community. Are any of these a remote for me up here? You got it for me? Thank you. Thank you. So you want to get to know us. We're self-made, family-owned, family-operated. Many, many people with Sheets as their last name still run and operate the company. CEO and President Travis Sheets, we'll see him on a later slide, is the, the grandson of one of the founding members of Sheets. So, you know, one of the things that is going to come up as a constant item on these slides is our total customer focus. So we're family-owned and operated. We try to run ourselves as a family, and we want to be engaged with our community and have a total customer focus for the people in our community. So redefining convenience or stores, fresh, clean, safe, again, that's part of our commitment to our community. We want to have a spot that people want to go to. The ultimate one-stop shop, again, you know, if it's convenient, people will come back to us. And, you know, we want somewhere, again, that people want to be. So if you can, you know, get something from the convenience store, the restaurant, a couple of slides later, we'll look a little bit, a little bit more at our focus on a restaurant to, again, be, you know, of fulfilling that part of the community that we can serve. Being open 24/7 is a really big commitment that we have to our customers and to our communities for, you know, different people that are out there on third shift, that don't have a lot of options through the middle of the night. So that restaurant focus that we're trying to bring is all hours of the night at all times. So here's a couple of pictures of our updated interior of our restaurant. So updated, you know, interior architecture, fully dedicated side of our convenience store that's not just shelving, you know, seating areas that are dedicated to our restaurant space. Again, just a, a couple of shots there of our upgraded facilities, upgraded architecture. So who is a Sheetz? So this is getting back to the family. So we have some of our founding brothers and all of their family members. So I think only a couple of those have an asterisk next to them marked as retired, but everybody else is a Sheets member and still working for the Sheets family, either on the board or as part of our corporate team. So what makes us unique? So again, I'm not going to read all these slides to you, but, you know, power of choice, all the different things that we can offer to our customer 24/7, you know, convenience without compromise, and then total customer focus. So again, this is just another, a long list of things that we are trying to bring to the community, bring to our customers, variety, quality, and then again, harping on it as much as I can, the total customer focus. And our mission, providing customers with fast, friendly service, quality products, and clean and convenient locations. So we want to be the brand that defines convenience. And one of our last slides on here, we are going to talk about some of our allocades and, you know, accomplishments through our visions and goals. And, you know, wanting to be a brand that defines convenience, we were actually just named number two in the country for all convenience stores, only behind Buc-E's, which, you know, if we are only behind Buc-E's, I think we're doing okay. So here's a, a couple of lists of awards that we're really proud of. Again, total customer focus does go beyond just our customers. We do have a really high focus on our employees. So number 33 from Forbes, 100 best companies to work for. So that's everybody in the country. And we're number 33 on that list. We're really proud of that. And then our last slide here, we're talking about Sheets of the Community, so different charities that we are a part of. So Sheets for the Kids is an employee-run charity. So we go into different communities, raise money for kids. We do participate in Make-A-Wish Foundation. Each one of our stores, every Christmas, puts together Make-A-Wish Foundations, and those store employees are the ones going out there and doing the shopping and making those dreams come true. And then, you know, Special Olympics is one of our really big focuses. So in all of the states that we operate in, which is currently seven states, we have a really big connection to all of our local Special Olympics offices. And then Feeding America. So in every location that we come into, we know that there's people that we need food, and we know that we have food that is going to go bad. So one of the first things that our district managers do when we move into a new area is we coordinate with different food banks. We see where we can take some of that food that's a day old, close to expiration, but people can still enjoy and make sure that we can get it into the hands of hungry people and see how we can feed the community. So I am with Sheets. I am on our entitlement and permitting team. So if there's any questions, I can ask you, I can answer for you as we go through and as you guys contemplate the different SUPs. Before you, please let me know. I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. You have any other comments at this time? Anyone else?
I, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Can you give us a projection on how many local jobs that this might bring to our area?
Yeah, so each one of our stores has both part-time and full-time positions. We are moving towards a focus on more full-time positions. And for all three shifts, I think it's somewhere around 24 positions to cover, you know, managerial positions, assistant positions, and then those part-time and full-time positions.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Where is the, geographically, the last Sheetz prior to this, did y'all build?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we have one open that is in Disputanta, up 460. So that's Petersburg.
Right.
And then we do have one at Richmond Airport on 64. And then we have one up in Gloucester that is close to being approved. So we should have approval in a couple of months on that location. So we are trying to move this direction. We're trying to get into, I guess, like this market, this location. This would definitely be one of, you know, our first five moving into the area, which again is why, you know, not everybody is going to be used to Sheets and what we offer. So that's why we really like to present this type of information in these slides, both to the Planning Commission and town councils as we come into the area, because you guys just might not know what we're all about.
Well, I grew up a little bit further north and west of here, where obviously there were a great number of Sheets.
Absolutely.
When I was at informative age. One, I, I guess I have just one concern. I, I do know your product. I've been in there a number of times, and it is a good product. But I was disappointed when I saw one of my favorite Sheetz stores that I used to pass by on Interstate 295 and Route 5 was sold. And it's no longer a Sheets, it's no longer close to being a Sheets. And I guess as decision-makers here, it concerns me to make sure that if we go out and extend the opportunity from a town perspective for y'all to be here, I'm hoping, and I know when you invest a lot of money, that, I, I don't know, I don't know your business. Not my business, but I do sincerely hope that this, if this is approved, that y'all continue to consider Smithfield a unique place to have your store, and don't, don't, don't flip it on us in three or four years.
Sure, absolutely.
That's the quickest way I can cut to the chase and be right there.
Sure. No, I, I absolutely understand. And it is, to your point, it is a big financial commitment for us as well. You know, with everything that happened five years ago with COVID and construction costs, everything's a lot more expensive than it used to be. For us to build a new store, it's about twice what it used to be five years ago. So we are very diligent in our reviews of different sites and finding targets for new stores to be. We think we'll be very successful in this location. We do close very few stores just across our portfolio. Usually, if we do end up closing a store, it's for relocation, and it's for us to try to find a different spot or our store is bigger than it used to be and it doesn't fit on that parcel. So we're trying to find something bigger where we can provide our full offering to the community. So I would say we absolutely would love to be here. We would love to be here for a long time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have, I have a question. I noticed on your presentation that at, one of the things they offer is a car wash, but it doesn't look like that will be here. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, ma'am. There will not be a car wash on this site.
Okay. And I have this question for you or Tammy. Is that area, is there pedestrian access there? I mean, eventually there will be more housing around. There's, it's still within town limits, obviously. That's a busy intersection. Is that allowed? Not allowed? How does that work?
Yes, they can install a sidewalk. The idea would be that as the development developed along Ben's Church, that each one would connect the sidewalk eventually.
So it is, so there will be a sidewalk on that side, and right now sidewalk kind of going nowhere. But, but I mean, to even to cross the street, cross that intersection there, I mean, is that allowable?
Across Turner, like a cross over to Turner?
Yeah, from, well, on Turner, and you want to cross Ben's Church Boulevard, I mean.
That would be something that VDOT would have to agree to because Ben's Church is, is VDOT's road.
Right, okay. So that's not part of this either. Okay.
They are not proposing. They are not proposing a crosswalk across to Turner at this time.
Gotcha. Just checking. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Are you putting in a Tesla Supercharger there?
Um, so I don't believe we have any plans immediately for any chargers at this location. Uh, the way that our EV charging, uh, portfolio operates is we reach out to three different, um, operators. So that's EV Go, Electrify America, and Tesla. And then we have one newer, um, EV provider that we're trying to coordinate with. Um, the name escapes me right now. So we do have four. And what happens, um, is our portfolio team will reach out to all of those providers and ask them if anybody wants to put chargers on our site. And we develop a third-party agreement for them to install their equipment on our site if any of them want to be there. Um, right now, EV is difficult to fund independently because a lot of the NEVI funding has dried up as of recent. Um, but that doesn't mean we couldn't or wouldn't put any EV chargers there in the future.
I sit across from, uh, Ms. Winslow in this, in this meeting, and, uh, so I think marketing tourism the whole time. And then, an interesting thing about Tesla Superchargers is that if you look, this, we're in a, it's a supercharger desert right here. So Norfolk, Newport News have a few, and then Richmond has a few, but in between, there's nothing. But what you'll find is if you, if you ever traveled in an EV, in an EV, is that you don't have a gas station on every single corner. So sometimes it takes you to a really cool place like Smithfield. And then you get here to get some electrons at Sheetz, and you wind up getting lured in by our wonderful marketing tourism people and spending money elsewhere in town. So I would say it would be a benefit if it, if it did. Um, so we would appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Tammy, did you have a recommendation on how long to defer? I think you recommended to defer, correct?
Yes, according to the applicants, they believe that they should be ready for the September Town Council meeting.
So Omar can coordinate with VDOT. That's the piece of itself. We want to make sure that study is correct. Omar, can you speak on the timing of that?
Omar, I'm Kimberly Horn Associates as well, uh, in the Richmond office, uh, offices at 2035 Mayville Street. Uh, we began the traffic study process in December. Uh, we met with VDOT, uh, and, and town staff, negotiated what would be analyzed in the traffic study. Our first iteration of the traffic study was, was turned in in February of this year. Uh, received comments in March that asked us to include additional traffic to be analyzed. So that's, there's a, there's a Wawa that was approved, Catty Corner from our project that was included. Um, there's the Sweetgrass Development further south of Ben's Church that we included. Uh, that study was revised, we submitted in March of this year. And then, uh, we received a second set of comments, uh, modifying some of the improvements that we had assumed. So we include Wawa and included the improvements that would have come with that project. Um, so those were, were removed. So, um, as well as, as, as those improvements, we also revised the trip generation potential of the, of the site. So if you think about it, um, to estimate the number of trips that Wawa would generate, there are national standards, um, that we would use. We'd look at, you know, number of fuel acquisitions, uh, size of the store. That was modified by VDOT, uh, to provide a very conservative assumption. So when you saw, uh, Tony presenting the, the restaurant component, we ran that as a separate restaurant. So our analysis assumes that Sheetz is, uh, a gas station as well as a fast-food restaurant. So those revisions were resubmitted last week with a revised traffic study. Uh, prior to submitting, we had multiple calls with VDOT staff to make sure that we were on the same page with what we're presenting and what we're, uh, analyzing. Presented the results, um, and that was submitted last week. So based on our discussions with them, we expect, uh, feedback from them, approval, or comments prior to the next month's, uh, meeting.
So you don't, you don't see the full package, but if you looked in the last, in the last planning commission's package, you could see the full comments from VDOT, of which there were many, that were yet to be addressed, and I guess they're being addressed, but there were, there were quite a few.
Mr. Riddick, if we defer this to the September meeting, if they're prepared at that time, does it have to go back to, uh, the Planning Commission?
No.
Okay. So, so you want to make a motion to accept the deferral?
Yes, I make a motion that we accept the deferral to the September Town Council meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Thank you for coming up.
Second.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? Call for the question.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
At this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing on the conditional rezoning and special-use permits. Oh, that's his, I'm sorry, that was Sheetz. The next one is number seven, is public hearing text amendment. Like to open that for group homes?
Yes, thank you. This is a proposed text amendment to Article 3 A, B, C, D, E, H, J 2 of the zoning ordinance. Uh, this will incorporate group homes as a byright use and no longer require an SUP in these residential zoning districts. That would be community conservation, neighborhood residential, suburban residential, downtown neighborhood residential, attached residential, residential office downtown, and the PMUD excluding multifamily dwellings. This was favorably recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Does anyone here want to speak on this matter for the public hearing?
Question, Ms. Clary?
Yes.
This, this isn't conforming to state law, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
There is, there's a draft ordinance attached to your agenda that does all the things that she just told you that you need to do.
Do we have a motion? To approve the draft ordinance as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Hearing none, any other further discussion? Call for the question.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Uh, next we'll open a public hearing for the text amendment aside your setbacks for cluster lots. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. This is a text amendment to, um, Article 3 CF 2B 2, which is our cluster lot side yard setback to be increased to 10 feet as opposed to the existing six-foot setback. This was favorably recommended by Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. We have one person signed up to speak on this matter. Amanda Porter?
Thank you, Amanda Porter at 708 South Church Street. Uh, it was my understanding, and thank you for clarifying that, that that was actually an increase to 10 feet. Uh, what I had read was suggesting, uh, a side yard setback of five feet and a rear yard of 10 feet. And honestly, I think that, um, lowering that setback to those standards would not be in the best interest of, uh, any of us, any of us residents, uh, anyone that wants to enjoy their property. So I would certainly hope that if there is a, if there is a request for a reduction, um, that you seriously consider that and the impact that it has on those of us that live here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Any other further discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the, uh, public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the ordinance as presented.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Bowman. Have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? And call for the question, please.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
This time I'd like to open a public hearing for a text amendment to multifamily residential. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. This is a text amendment to Article 3F of the zoning ordinance. This would be to remove regulations that address attached townhouse and duplex units as they are subject to AR regulations. This was just duplicated in the MFR zoning district. And for clarity, we want to refer them to the AR regulations and keep it there. Thank you.
Okay, anyone that want to come forward to speak on this matter? Anyone from council would like to speak about this. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I recommend, or, excuse me, I make a motion that we approve as briefed.
Have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question for you?
Yes.
Tammy, all the red strikes, all these things that are being eliminated, these are because they are redundancies?
Correct. They are...
And they can be found in other, other places?
Yes, sir.
So we're not really changing application?
No.
We're just removing a lot of ink that doesn't need to be there?
Just for clarification, because it does say it's subject to AR district guidelines. So you would go back to the AR zoning district and follow those. Um, so it, it just doesn't make sense for it to be repeated in the MFR.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Any other further discussion? Call for the question.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber Meyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Uh, this time I'd like to open a public hearing for a text amendment requiring the definition of duplex. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is a proposed text amendment for duplexes to Articles 3D, 3E, and then the definition in Article 13. This will clarify that duplex units are permitted on one parcel, which would be one duplex, two units per single parcel of land, and/or one duplex per subdivided lots. Uh, the minimum lot areas and lot widths were just doubled, um, if you were going to include one unit on one piece of property. Again, this is just for clarification within our zoning ordinance. It was favorably recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Clary. Anyone like to come and speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I have a question. Tammy, can you, and I was at the Planning Commission when they discussed this, well, at multiple meetings, um, but can you explain, again, why we need this? I mean, what's wrong with what we have versus why we're, why we're changing this? If you could just...
So when we started this project, we were just looking for clarity. It wasn't entirely clear in the zoning ordinance if you allowed one duplex with two units on one lot, or if each individual unit of the duplex needed to be on its own subdivided lot. Um, at that point in time, uh, we switched gears, uh, in, at the Planning Commission to allow both options. And this way, they can have that one duplex, two units on one parcel, and that would be doubled of the square footage for the lot size and double for the width for both the interior and the corner. And then you also had the option of having one duplex on two separate parcels.
Did I answer your question?
This is the problem that I have with this, is that it is... I understand what you're saying, but if someone were to ask me this, I would not be able to explain it. And I think that we should have zoning regulations that the average person can understand. No offense, Mr. Riddick, we can always come to you. I get that, but it...
We talked about it at length.
I know. I, and I was here for both of those meetings, and it went on and on. Um, is there a problem that, that made us change this? I mean, why, you know, I'm just wondering, or is there a, a development, or what, what made us get to here? I mean, was there some, a duplex that wasn't?
The language was not clear in the zoning ordinance. Um, so as you see part of all these other projects...
I don't know that it's any more clear.
All over downtown Smithfield, we have a lot of duplexes.
I know it.
And most of them are on one lot.
Right.
And they have two units, and so one person owns it.
Right.
But the, in, like, one is right across the street from me, and they rent it.
Right.
They don't, there's nobody, there's a landlord that rents it. But that's really hard to, if you wanted to, if you wanted people to own the two separate units, that would be very difficult to do on one lot unless you created a condominium.
Right.
And the more simple way to do it is to run the lot right down the middle, so that somebody can own one side and somebody can own the other side. And so we just gave, it's just an option to do it either way.
But has it been a problem? Do we have people waiting around here? I, I'm just wondering why. I mean, I get, okay, we're, we have, it gives us more options, but if it hasn't been a problem, why are we fixing something that wasn't a problem?
Wasn't really defined one way or the other, and so we're just...
But it wasn't a problem either.
It was defined. It was, it was completely defined before.
But, okay. You don't have to do this, but it just makes...
I'm just wondering why.
It makes a lot of sense.
I don't know that it does.
I will say, I reviewed it through Planning Commission, and the concerns that I had were addressed because the original proposal sought to make the overall lot size smaller and thereby increase the density through use of a alternative titling mechanism or what have you. Um, so the Planning Commission worked to stop that, and what you, what you see in the draft, um, document is one that the lots remain the same size-wise. So, and I would love for someone to correct me if I'm wrong, town attorney or, or town manager, planner, but as far as I can tell, there's no, if you looked at it through a density lens, there's no way to change the density through this mechanism because the lot sizes and lot widths are all the same. I could agree that it is kind of a solution for a problem that doesn't exist, uh, that I'm aware of. No one's presented that there's a problem or anyone choosing to do this. So it is a little mystifying why we're doing it. Uh, I will admit that as well. There's no, there's no direct reason or, or, uh, desire for it from any of our citizens or customers. So it is a little odd while we're doing it, but I feel, I feel safe that there's no, um, no use from a density perspective of it. I think.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Public hearing has been closed. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if I'm ready to entertain a motion, but I just want to back up the councilwoman. I've read it 150 times. I, I can't figure out what it says either, but certainly will follow the lead of, uh, Councilman Cutler, who has been present at all of these meetings and seems to have no problem with it. So with that said, I move that we accept.
We have a motion. Thank you so much. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, call for the question.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber Meyer?
No.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Uh, now I'd like to open up a public hearing for a text amendment for home occupations. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. This is a text amendment to Article 2U 15. This would remove author, composer, computer programmer, salesperson, telephone answering service as home occupation uses. This was favorably recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. Anyone like to come forward to speak on this matter? Hearing none, do we have any questions from council? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Oh, go ahead. I was just going to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, first of all, I'd just like to thank Mrs., Ms. O'Barry for bringing this to our attention, and obviously, we're hoping to correct... And obviously, we're hoping to correct something that shouldn't have ever been an issue to begin with, so.
Thank you. Public hearing has been closed. No one has come to speak. Do we have a motion to accept the tax amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the text amendment as briefed.
We have a motion, Mr. Cutler, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Hearing no other discussion, call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Bieber Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Cutler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Now we have a motion to accept a nominating committee for the expired term of Bill Davidson and Mr. Brooks and Mrs. Butler on that committee. One of you guys would like to speak on this?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilwoman Butler and I were tasked as the nominating committee to recommend planning commissioner to fill the unexpired term of Bill Davidson. After a couple of discussions and review of his talent bank forms, we are recommending Dr. Herb Bevan for this position. He's no stranger to this town, has been a follower of the Goings On for many years, and served previously on planning commission as well.
Any discussion? Bill, does this go to, do we vote on this?
You vote on it right now.
Yeah, very good.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
We have a recommendation for the motion to accept the nominating committee's recommendation.
Second.
Do we have a second? We have a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, call for the question.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Definitely yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
We have approval of the summary minutes from July 1st.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I review the minutes, they're short for a change, and I would recommend they be approved as presented.
We have a recommendation, so I move. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call for the question.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Any new business come before council?
I have a few items to discuss, Mr. Mayor, but I will be brief. The first item is a task to town manager to develop a task tracking process for town council assigned tasks. So pretty much, I was in the Navy for 25 years and sat through lots of meetings. And unless you have some type of accountability for your system, tasks by voice are pretty meaningless in some cases. Hard to track, certainly, and certainly, and definitely hard to ensure that what the person heard is what she said. So I'd like to, I suppose one way to do this is just to track and identify it in the minutes. But I would rather, I think, leave it to the town manager to determine a long-term solution that will work over turnovers of town councils and administrators. And really, so that they're tracked from month to month. So, you know, it's real easy to, for me to say, Bill, I need you to, I need you to talk to the county attorney about proffers. Well, Bill doesn't really know what that means, and it's not specific, there's no deadline. And then I don't get what I want, the data, I don't get the data that I need for decision-making. So I think we'll be better suited if we have a process that we create in, in collaboration with, with the staff that clearly identifies in the minutes, refreshes them at every meeting. It could be committees, could be town council, doesn't, either one, very, you know, flexible. And then at the conclusion of meetings, we can brief new tasks for clarity and deadlines. And that's, that's a useful tool at the end of a meeting to say, okay, you said you needed the town attorney to look at X. You know, what really is that? So probably more, maybe more appropriate for a committee's meeting. But it would be real useful to do these things. And so I'm just going to go through the tasks that I discussed earlier in the meeting. And the first is to conduct a new business closed session process, including pre-vote and minutes. And this is to increase transparency to our voters and citizens. It's also important to be able to review big decisions or discussions. You know, we've seen, I'm aware of some issues with that, but I can certainly see issues with that. If we talked about something today in closed session, then six months or a year from now, we had a question about what we talked about. And then the, the pre-vote, I think, is really important. And I think, you know, may head off some issues and give us, as council members, just a moment to, an opportunity to say, oh, I think this, we need to bring something else into closed session or this is not appropriate in closed session. But before we're immersed in the topic, right? Because often we walk in and we're trying to get down to business and get back out here with the citizens. But we become immersed in a topic and then we, you know, evolve. Whereas if we just knew the subject and the law and why we needed to do it, then we can make a decision that, yeah, this is the right thing. So I think that would be useful for us. So in the task process, task for the closed session process, the manager and attorney, direct reports evaluation process for the four personnels in progress by the HR director through the town manager. And then the town planning recommendation guidelines to the town manager with me to develop recommendation guidelines for recommending approval by the planning department. And then, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Any other new business come before council?
Yes, I think this might fall in new business. Based on the other votes that we've taken this evening. I would like to make a motion, Bill, you're going to have to help me here, to empower the town manager to reimburse anybody who had paid a $400 submission fee because we had bad language and bad requirements in regard to the home occupation thing. Anybody that was affected by that within the last year, I am proposing that we reimburse those folks.
Second.
I don't think you can do that. If you, I don't think you can refund something like that. It's not bad language, it's just language that wasn't updated. It was, at the time it was adopted, it, some of it, the author part probably made no sense whatsoever. But the telephone answering service might have made some sense. It only applied in multifamily units. It didn't apply in a, so your point is well taken. And we fixed the problem, and unfortunately, this lady paid her money. And if we can give it back to her, that's fine. I'm not so sure you can, but I'll find out. If it's lawful to give her the money back, then you've made a motion to do so, and we can do it. But, yeah, if it's, refunds are...
Yeah.
They're not, we'll, we'll have to see. If it's okay, we, if it's okay, you've made a motion and we'll give that lady, I don't think there's anybody else, do you? Ms., Ms. Clary, I think she would be the only one. That's an appropriate motion, and you can vote on it. But I'm just, I'm just giving you a caveat. If we can, we will, if we can't, we'll tell you why.
We have a motion, we also have a second, from Mr. Cutler. Any other further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, call for the question.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber Meyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
This time, we may have whole business which we've already covered. Do we need to say anything else about this, Bill, at this time?
That's all right, you took care of it.
Okay, very good. Hearing, hearing nothing further, meeting is adjourned.